Isn't that dressed down to sloppy?
It's in the corner.
Where are you going?
This is October seventeenth.
Welcome to your city commission study session. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at six P. M. And midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. A study session for Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. First up, business symposium update.
This will be our assistant city manager Penny Holler on this one.
Mayor Commissioners, we are going to talk about the Leavenworth two thousand twenty-two Business Symposium. So you'll recall that the plan for the symposium came up from the city commission in the spring as you were creating your goals for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. The really the goal of the event is to bring in some top level resources, both regional and local to our to our business community. Bring it here, make it convenient, set it at a time where it's accessible. It's probably a good time to do this, right? We're in sort of the COVID recovery, but we're also facing upcoming challenges, workforce, inflation, supply chain. So it is kind of a good time to bring some of these resources to the city. And this is also a chance for businesses to really connect with the city. Sometimes there's this impression that the city isn't accessible, or I don't know who to contact. So this also will bring city staff to be sort of available for questions, whether that's in a larger group setting or whether that's one-on-one, which can be helpful. So I'll sort of kick this off with, it's been a busy time in economic development. In the last thirty days, I've gotten eight calls to the city of people looking to either grow their current business in Leavenworth or to begin a business in Leavenworth.
Awesome.
So there's really sort of this momentum that's been happening. That's I've been here for about a year and it's kind of the you can just tell there's something has something has changed and shifted. It's very exciting. So sometimes people contact me at the city because they don't know where else to go. They say, I have this idea, I have this concept, I'm looking for a building, I'm looking for grants, I'm looking for information. But they really don't know sort of where to start based on what their needs are. And I think that's really one of the goals of this is to sort of meet businesses where they are, whether a small business, a large business, looking to expand, looking to start. And really, who do I go to? Who's the expert that can help me with this? So here's some of the basics of the symposium. Monday, October seventeenth, it's at the Riverfront Community Center, obviously here in Leavenworth. It will begin at eight-thirty in the morning. Those who would like to attend need to RSVP for their lunch ticket. And there is no cost for Leavenworth businesses. So this is put on by the city and will be open and available. And then really, as we look at the agenda, which I think you should have a copy on the table and what's included in your packet. But we have the ability to bring in some regional experts. These are some of the top level folks to help you grow or expand your business in Leavenworth. So this is the University of Kansas Small Business Development Center. They are very much small business focused. When I meet with an entrepreneur and they say, I want to start a business. They don't have a business plan, they don't have a marketing plan, they don't know how much funding they're going to need. They don't have some of those basic items lined up. I say, here's the folks you need to call, they have no cost resources that could help you. So very excited to bring the Small Business Development Center called the SBDC. They'll actually be presenting sort of technology tools to help you know average profit margins depending on your industry, which really can help you set some benchmarks for, you know, where you should be or what you might be doing differently if there's some differences. And then we'll be running some concurrent sessions. So the next one would be with Workforce Partnership. So if you're around the community, the business community right now, you're hearing a lot of, I'm having trouble hiring staff. So what what is any any tools, any tricks, any tips? What are some resources? There are the folks that can help with that. So very excited to have them present that to local businesses. That one is is probably more designed for folks with maybe ten or more staff members, so slightly larger. And then the concurrent session with that will actually be the Leavenworth Economic Development Department. I'll be presenting that. And that's really about what the city has to offer. It tends to sometimes lean more toward your entrepreneurs. I'm looking to start, I'm looking to grow. And that's where I say, well, let's talk about the Economic Development Grant that we have. Let's talk about ADA accessibility needs and the grant we have there. Let's talk about neighborhood, the redevelopment that's available through tax rebate. So those will be two sessions that are run parallel. One's a little differently focused on city resources and one is really just that focus on hiring and workforce partnership tips. And then the third one, I just spoke again today with Mike Barrera from the U. S. Small Business Administration. They work out of Kansas City, Missouri. We are sort of, you know, what's what's most relevant, right? Because I think that's what we want to do, given the the current environment, what's most relevant to business owners? If we're going to ask them to come sit through some conference time and step away from their immediate business operations, what makes the most sense? And so Mike and I were speaking about, you know, I think we're really trying to prepare businesses for the future and look at what's ahead and sort of, you know, just be prepared. So that topic is going to be business preparedness, sort of, are you prepared for what's ahead? And that's going to maybe cover a little bit of broad spectrum items. Might put a sort of note in for some things that people might take advantage of in our community specifically. If you're a veteran owned business, minority owned business, female owned business, if you're looking to contact with the federal government. But also might just be that general, you know, what should businesses be doing right now as we're looking ahead in two thousand twenty-two and beyond? So we're very excited to have those panelists join us for sessions. And then there's a lot of local involvement in this too, right? So I've spent some time working with entrepreneurs. And I think, like all of us, what speaks most to them is that story that they can relate to. So part of this will include a local legends panel where we're going to invite business owners who are local, who've maybe grown, who've maybe overcome some obstacles, to do a little bit of sharing their story and then to be there to have questions answered. You know, I know you were at this location and then you moved to a bigger building. How did you do that? What does that look like? How was it like to work with the city in that? Or just really to provide that authentic story of there is a path for businesses to be here and be successful and grow. So I'm still lining up the panelists. I have one confirmed, I've done some outreach on others, so that'll probably be about three to four local businesses. I might mostly, you know, smaller businesses, but there might be one potentially larger business just to kind of give that, you know, two steps ahead of where you could grow to.
Any restaurants in that?
I have reached out to at least one.
I have one in mind that I think would be good. Jason Wiggins.
I was just thinking about that.
Yeah. He's very successful, but.
I'm happy to to talk more about that. I don't want to share in case they decline my invitation.
Different types of businesses, but yeah.
We knew this was going to be important, but also, you know, tough because, you know, who are you not picking? So we'll definitely hopefully next year get whoever, you know, wanted to participate this year.
And then we'll have a city scoop. So in some ways, we do a little bit, a little bit of assuming that because we're at the meetings, that everyone knows all the information that we know that's happening with the city that might impact local businesses. Does everyone know about the new bridge, New Centennial Bridge? Does everyone know about the new U. S. P.? Does everyone know about Fourth Street and what the reconstruction plans are? Does everyone know who to contact if you need a sign permit? Just, you know, some of these basic things. So really, this will be a chance, probably over the lunch hour session, to sort of just present some relevant information on broader city items to the business community. And then probably at the end, maybe drill down to some more specific things, historic district and things like that, just kind of share that information. And then we're doing this in conjunction with our local partners. So Leavenworth Main Street will have an information booth where they can share their services to local businesses. The Chamber confirmed, so they will be there sharing information. Girl Leavenworth County Development Corporation, which is a group the city participates in, will be there to share loan information. So really kind of, you know, who's regional, who's the experts, and then who's local that you can reach out to. Here's just sort of what you're you're looking at and to share it with the audience and viewers is the rough agenda. So tentatively at eight-thirty, welcome. I'm still working on the keynote speaker. I have a request in for someone from the Department of Commerce. So I'm optimistic that that will will come through. It'd be nice to get a little bit of state involvement to come here to Leavenworth. And then the opening session will start somewhere around nine. This is give or take fifteen minutes as I verify presenters and their ability to drive here from other cities. But this is pretty much what you can expect. Followed by the session, the local legends panel, and then the city scoop at the very end.
Looks good.
I know.
I'm not to questions yet, I'm getting ahead of myself on that one. Just wanted to say that, well, I've been reaching out. So Leavenworth Main Street and the Chamber and other business partners have kind of known that this was going to happen and on the calendar. And we didn't have many major conflicts. But we'll be reaching out and doing the outreach this week. There should be a flyer that goes out, that'll go out on the city's website, that'll go out on the Facebook page. We'll share that with our community partners, so we can expect to get the word out that way. We've also been having a lot of success with our new CBB coordinator, Jennifer, who's been getting out to the business community and just being that sort of city liaison to share this information. She was really successful getting Camp Leavenworth information out. And we continue to have growing participation on the business bulletin board that way. And she'll probably be doing some direct outreach to local businesses as she's able on the symposium as well. And then potentially a mailer, maybe two weeks ahead of time. I don't want to do that too late, otherwise paper gets lost. So that might be something that's done closer to the actual event. And then I also wanted to just let you know, I do plan to invite those who are transitioning out of Fort Leavenworth that might be interested in possibly the entrepreneurship track when they retire or leave. That's, you know, through the TAP program, if you're familiar with that. So I'm kind of just, hey, this could be, you know, what do you need to do if you were looking to have a business in the city of Leavenworth? So we'll be doing some outreach there as well. Now I actually am on to what questions can I answer for you?
I will say this, I appreciate you guys taking the ball and really running with this. So, you know, that's that's a lot, and I feel like you put together a good package, especially from the agenda standpoint. Also, I appreciate that, man. But yeah, I'm excited about it. I think if, you know, folks can come in, if we can kind of build on this going forward, you know, year after year. And entrepreneurs, folks that are kind of thinking about Leavenworth. I know one business owner I spoke with a few weeks ago, one of our, you know, parks over there was saying, hey, the city made it very enticing for me to come here. And so if we can build on that, you know, why people are going to be successful here, I think it can continue to grow. And you talked about what we're going to be doing, like with the bridge and other things, what we're what's going on around town and development there. I think there's a good story to put together on, you know, why it just makes sense to come to Leavenworth and do some business here. So anyway, so thank you. I appreciate you really running with the ball, man. Thank you.
Okay, I agree. I mean, this is great that you've taken this. You're putting together an awful lot of information, and I don't mean the word awful. You're putting together a tremendous amount of information. I think that's great. People, you know, I think there are people out there don't know what they don't know that they can find here. You know, and this will give them give some of them an opportunity. I hope people actually are watching and and will hear about this. I do have a question, though. At the end of the day, will you be handing out? With all the information you're putting out, it would be a rather thick handout to everybody. So it's not, you know, they don't have to be taking copious notes the whole time and not seeing anything because they got their nose down the paper.
I mean, that's a good thought, right? Is it easiest to hand out a paper packet? In some ways, I've dealt with a lot of folks who learn or take any information differently. So I think hopefully we're going to meet that, right? Hopefully, we're going to have, I mean, I would see a sort of a follow-up website that the city hosts that connects them with all the resources, sort of a post-business symposium if you went, who you can connect with. So you can find it online. I like the idea of a paper packet.
I'm the type that I would want it in the beginning, and I'd be taking copious notes on it anyway.
Yeah, I think that's that's a good thought, is to make sure we're hitting all of what the audience might want to be able to digest that. It will be a lot of information. I'd also say, if we do nothing but make those connections and they know who they need to call and follow up with.
Right.
I mean, in some ways, that's the win. They know that they know, you know, you'll help me with the business plan.
That's the first step, yeah.
Right. First step.
Yeah. Great job, you two working together on this. Question that I have, will this be recorded?
We've thought about it. We have pretty limited AV help here, so we may a session or two, we'll see. But yeah, I mean, it's good information, you hate to lose it.
Yeah.
But it's a lot to do that and host it, but we'll definitely look into that.
Okay.
The only thing I was thinking too is as far as follow-up and that for businesses that want to begin to open. And one reason I said restaurant is because something goes through my mind of I remember a time when I was involved in the chamber in the in the permitting process, the permitting process, like having to have not only, I mean, there was there was a time when, I think now you all work together with the fire department, health department, everybody together to open a business, to do the inspections. But there was a time when the the city gave a permit and then everything was done for the building permit, now all that, everything was done. And then the fire department came in and said, you'll have to tear out the ceiling because it's not, you know, this kind of thing. So so some kind of follow-up for that, you know, on how do you? How do you do the permitting process in the city and have all these things? And of course, health department, you know, and fire department don't have to come in. Fire department does, but the others don't as much.
Yeah, we could probably hit on that. What you're referring to is what we instituted eight years ago called DRC, or the Development Review Committee, which is all of the city disciplines come together to review stuff.
That'd be good for people to know.
Because that can be so confusing, I would think.
Yeah.
Who do I call first?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But it used to be, it just, I mean, they were just out there. They just would call and they didn't know who to call first. And and I know it was frustrating, and the chamber was real frustrated with that process.
Hopefully, that's something we do fairly often now, right? So if they contact me and they ask for a grant and I hear about what they're looking at, I say, okay, that's you're going to have, you're going to need to do this and get the permit. And so in some ways, if you reach one of us, hopefully, we're all coordinating that. Are you in a historic district? What does that mean? So I think we're really working on internal communication.
Yeah, that's and unfortunately, that does happen, you get far down the road without.
Without knowing, you know, and then have to go back. Anyway, very good. I'm impressed with the layout and the, I'm looking forward to hearing from the local businesses.
Yeah, I'm excited to be there.
And and one thing, I know it's only a month away, less than a month away. But if, just one thought is, if we could put together a one-pager outlining, hey, why Leavenworth? You know, why kind of Leavenworth? And, you know, some of those, just kind of get plenty of those out and just have them ready. Even put them on our website too, you know, just things like that, you know, why people come here to set up shop, so.
I think that's a great idea. We recently kind of did a just a really brief sort of you want to start a business in Leavenworth page that went through some of those highlights, I think you just mentioned. And it starts out with that kind of brief intro paragraph, why Leavenworth? In some ways, we know that so much more than a paragraph. I was like, okay, I got to, I got to focus this one, right? Like by the airport and all this, you know, good stuff going on.
Yeah, bullets are great, yeah.
I love that, yeah.
Cool.
Is there anything that we can do to help promote this event?
Yeah, well, I would love, I mean, you're all welcome to join in the city scoop session. So that will be everyone kind of eating lunch and really listening as we have the chance to present, you know, on behalf of the city. This is the city's connection to local businesses. So definitely welcome the commissioners to be there. You know, it might be more kind of staff doing some of the presentations, but certainly to be available for for questions.
Yeah, so that would be the best time. I might not be able to stay the whole day, but I could come.
You're welcome to stay the whole day as well, if your schedule permits, okay?
Sounds good.
I'll be there the whole day.
I do. Thank y'all. Right up there. Thank you, Penny, so much. Okay, next up, traffic signal condition assessment presentation.
Brian Faust, Director of Public Works, and we also have Kurt Roderick.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Back in March of this year, the commission did approve a contract with Olson to conduct a traffic signal assessment for the city's traffic signal system. The assessment is an important component in the city's roadway and infrastructure goal, which is to develop a long-range maintenance plan associated with our infrastructure. The city currently has forty-three traffic signals in our system, ranging from many decades old to virtually brand-new. As signals age, poles can experience cracking typically from wind loading. They can rust both inside and out, which reduces the thickness, which can reduce their structural capacity. Individual components such as old wiring or items within the controller cabinet can fail or become obsolete. The cost to completely replace a signalized intersection can range from two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So when you take that over forty-three intersections, that's a tremendous liability. It is important to manage this asset like other assets, like we do the streets, our bridges, our buildings, and our waste water treatment plants. And that maintenance and replacement of components are done to help ensure the signals operate efficiently and safely. In addition, there are changing regulatory requirements like ADA and advancements in communications between signals and in smart technologies that should be planned for and incorporated where feasible. This evening, Kurt is here to present their findings.
Yeah, thanks, Brian, and good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here. It was fun to work in your community and continue to, so great community. And I'm glad to hear about the business symposium and Camp Leavenworth as well. So as Brian mentioned, we completed the signal system assessment. And one thing I, my name is Kurt Roderick, I guess. I'm the team lead for Traffic and Technology for Olson out of Overloom Park. One thing I, I'm also the project manager for this project. And what I really liked about this project is it got to showcase a few of our teams that have expertise. So that's just what the slide is with the structural review that we did. We got to use our non-destructive testing team that we don't get to use very often on the traffic side. And they were able to kind of see through the poles, see how much steel is left in those poles, to see how they're deteriorating and kind of estimate an age and if there's any safety concerns. So also used our telecom team as well, because they have some good expertise as well when looking into cabinets. So the scope of our project kind of consisted of these five points. The first one is work with the city, Brian and the staff, to understand what existing data they have, kind of pick at their brains and see what they know about these signals, where they know they have problem points, what they've done in the past, as builds for all the signals that they have. So we know where all the pole boxes, conduits, wires are out there before we get on the field. And then the next step is to do that, a non-structural data collection. And this is that picture you saw at the title screen where James was in the cabinet, opening the cabinet, taking pictures, recording everything that's in that cabinet. We also popped all the pole boxes and identified where all the conduits were and where the cabling is all running. The map on the right is a GIS map that we created that includes all this data. It has location and markers and pictures of everything we looked at out there. And this GIS has been turned over to the city so it can be a live document. So as signals are replaced or components are replaced, the city can go out there and update the GIS. And so then if they need to know what's out in a signal, how old it is, what it looks like, they can just pull up the GIS instead of having to run out of the field every time to see what is out there. So that's the non-structural data side. The structural data side, which I talked about a little bit already, we did the same, went out to every signal. This is the non-destructive testing team, looked at every signal base, the anchor bolts, the foundation of those signals, took pictures of everyone, those are documented in GIS as well. So we have pictures of all that. And then next step is we put together some recommendations and prioritization to prioritize which signal should be replaced in what order and for what reasons. And then what we're working on now is the standards and specifications side of things. So put together specific Leavenworth standard drawings and specifications for traffic signals, ITS communications that can be put in with all new traffic signal plan sets so that all signals moving forward are all standardized, have the same controller, same equipment, look the same. So city techs know what's out there before they even get out there because everything's standard, everything should be the same. So I'll go into each of these a little bit more in detail here. So looking at structural condition, these are some of the pictures that I pulled straight from GIS showing what's out there right now. The the map in the lower right is, there's something specifically special about this intersection. I just wanted to show what a zoomed-in version of an intersection looks like, where you can see all the different components, pole boxes, poles, conduits, et cetera, of the intersection itself. The pole in top right and the one in the bottom left or two that that had some damage out there. As you can see, the top right one, the foundation is deteriorating, and so that was a concern. And the one in the bottom left, you can kind of see it, but it's dented in there on the left side. So a vehicle must have left the roadway and ran into it or something like that. So just some typical things we were looking for out there in the field. On the non-structural side, again, looking at the cabinets, taking pictures, pulling pole boxes. We also looked at all the ADA ramps throughout the town, at all the signalized intersections, not all the intersections, just the signalized intersections. So we, so now you have a record of which ramps are need replaced or or should be replaced. If you go in and replace the signal, now you know what, if you should replace all the ramps or all the ramps are good, et cetera. And all that information and pictures of the ramps are all in the GIS as well. So I guess I can stop for questions. Any questions about our existing conditions?
Well, the one slide you had in the beginning, yes, what, that one. What, what does all that mean, like the the yellow Xs and the aqua? Is there like a key to that or you're like, these really need to be replaced now or?
Yeah, they, the colors don't necessarily mean that.
Okay.
They don't mean that, I guess. They just mean the, I think it's just what layer is on top of the other layer.
So is that just the forty-three?
Yeah, these are the forty-three signals you have in the city, including some emergency signals, like for fire stations and stuff we looked at as well, so.
Is there, then, if you went forward again, the different ones, is there a standardized? Are they all the same nowadays?
The signals.
I guess, yeah, that.
Yeah, they all have, they all have the same.
And how they're mounted and everything.
There is a standard. I know the city has been following KDOT standards for a long time. So those standards have changed throughout the years, KDOT has changed their standards. So generally, they're all the same now. The city has like the the pedestal-style signals downtown versus the the pole and mast arms that are kind of outside of the downtown area. So those obviously are a little bit different, have some different needs. But but generally, they should all be similar. Now, the components inside the cabinets, they they have changed throughout the years too. But I know the city is working on standardizing, like the controller. There's there's essentially a computer inside of every single cabinet at the signal that runs these, runs the signals, the brains of the signals, and you can see all the wires and and everything that's in there. And there's different, obviously, models and makes of all these controllers. So there are various types of those throughout the city, but I know the city is working on standardizing that stuff.
Did you, so you went and you looked at all forty-three?
We looked at, I think, thirty-nine or thirty-eight of them because there were some brand-new ones that are just been implemented that we did.
Like at the twentieth in Eisenhower and second in Thornton, some of those signals are very new. We had all the, had all the current information for that. They've incorporated that into the GIS layer, but they didn't go actually use those brand-new ones.
How do you, I know you discussed this in the beginning, and and this is just something, my curiosity.
Yeah.
How, what do you do to decide the inside if the steel is deteriorating or whatever, if it's?
On the poles themselves.
Right.
This is, this is not my expertise, but they, they, it's kind of like.
Like an X-ray?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. They do an X-ray or MRI type type scan of it. And they also have some chemicals that they put on there to that will seep into the cracks so that they highlight on the MRI screen or X-ray device that they have. So yeah, they have, they have a few different techniques depending on what's going out there. I I've never done it myself, but.
I was just curious, yeah.
Yeah, it's when they write up their, what they do, it's like over my head on the stuff they do. But but that's essentially what it is, so.
Some of the, some of the poles have the the timer, you know, the the second timer. Are we evaluating those to see if more or less of those need to be put around town? I mean, I would say more, but.
We, we documented.
Walk downtown a lot.
Yeah, we documented where they were and how they are running. So downtown, they're pre-timed, so they just switch with the signal phasing. We did not make specific recommendations on if you need those as they are.
The walkers especially, it's really helpful.
The current standard of signals includes.
Oh, good.
Countdown heads, so.
I think every new one, almost five years has had that. Yeah, it's just a matter of going back. Yeah, like, you know, we just did Broadway and Charn. Yeah, like, you know, we just did Broadway and Choctaw, I think, two years ago.
Like Fourth Street needs them really badly, but I mean, you know, for walkers, because we have so many elderly people that walk across Fourth Street.
Yeah, so any new signal should have them because of the current standard.
Okay, good, that's good to know. Thank you.
All right, so I guess summarize the results of what we saw from structural and non-structural, and there's a more detailed list of results in your packets, which has the report in there. But one cracked, kind of immediate need we saw there from the structural was at Fourth and Spruce. There are four other intersections that should be prioritized for replacement, kind of put that at the top of your list for addressing. The rest of the thirty-eight signals are in pretty decent shape from a structural condition, so you can move them further down the replacement list. From a non-structural look at things, the city has no communications to any of their signals. That means, that's kind of a, you'll see that in our recommendations is to add that communications. That's a couple of things, you can do better signal timing, you can monitor the signals with cameras, you can monitor the traffic and the signals with cameras, you can also, it's also future-proofing it for the, for the future. Once you get connected vehicles and autonomous vehicles, they'll want to talk to the signals and have communications between signals and control, and some master control system. The one signal that does have communications is Fourth and Eisenhower at the south end of town, and that's connected into the Operation Green Light system where they're managing that signal along with multiple others along K seven. So that's one of the big things we noticed, and then as we've talked previously, there's various types of detection, vehicle detection throughout town, various controllers and various types of cabinets throughout town. So just the goal would be to eventually standardize those as we do replacements, which, which will happen with the new standards and specifications. And then already mentioned the non-compliant ADA ramps that are noticed throughout town, which is very typical of cities to have non-compliant ADA ramps, so. So now moving into the recommendations of what our report says, kind of the three buckets that we were working with, with the city. First is obviously address safety concerns, that's top of the list. Look at which signals, which poles need to be replaced in the near term. Build up communications, there's multiple benefits to that. So we have that in our list of recommendations, and then start getting that list of replacing and addressing the signals so that over twenty-five years, then you've started touching all the signals in a consistent, regular basis. Start looking that out. So before I jump to the next page, you'll see there's, we put together kind of two plans, kind of a bare-bones plan to address these items, and then kind of a full recommendation plan to address these items. Obviously, bare-bones has, it addresses all the safety concerns, it does build up communications, and it replaces all the, all the, I guess, the pieces of the signals to bring them up to, to standard, like standardized across the board. The full recommendations does the same thing, it builds up communications in a different way, a more robust way, and does a full replacement of the signal, so just to give you kind of both, both ends of the spectrum. So this is just the first six years of our plan. In the, in the report, it has a full look at all the signals throughout the city of how to replace that over X number of years. We go out to twenty forty-seven on the light plan and twenty forty-six on the full plan, so over the next twenty-five years, we're looking at how to, how to address all the things we're looking at. So from a, the light plan looks at wireless communications to bring in all the signals, to talk between the signals. That is a, it's a fairly common way of communicating between signals. You'll notice our next plan recommends fiber optic communications, it's more robust, they're more consistent, it's faster speeds, et cetera. And then this plan also looks at critical updates to all the signals over the next, I guess fifteen years, I guess not twenty-five, but basically addressing specific replacements, replace the cabinet controller, and this one pole that we saw had a little bit of damage to it, not a full replacement. So these costs are kind of cut off on the bottom, but for the light plan, these are in thousands, so one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. As Brian mentioned, a full signal is three-hundred thousand plus or minus, so as you can see, these don't quite get to full signal replacements, but they address the main concerns. The full plan does the recommended fiber test. So there's the Fifth and Spruce one as a full replacement for three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, and then jumps into building out the fiber communications between the signals, and then starts work knocking off the signals as full replacements as well throughout. So you can see like Tenth and Limit, the city already has that one on the docket for replacement with a KDOT funding. So we've included that one there. And then as you can see, these price takes are a little higher, three-twenty-five, four-twenty-five, they jump up just depending on how you attack these communications corridors, up to the way we have it planned out, eight-fifteen, seven-hundred, I mean, nine-sixty-five, that's a big, obviously a big one, but just moving out, just give you kind of a step-by-step yearly plan to systematically look at all the signals and replacement over the next twenty-five years, so. One thing with, here's kind of a comparison of the two, just to get it in one spot. One thing we're trying to, or trying to identify is place to help you guys get funding to do these items, grants, things like that through Mark or KDOT or the new infrastructure bill. There might be opportunities to, to help fund these items, so. Any, I guess that's the end of next one's questions, so I guess any, any questions on that, recommendations?
Sure, I've got some, and I appreciate you showing all that, giving the detail there. So I'll ask kind of a stupid question, obviously, a lot of new technology can be great, but based off of what you've talked about there, maybe hitting on more of anything non-structural, so just really increasing, boosting technology. Can you give me an example of things that a city our size, benefits that they've seen from implementing something like that, like anything substantial they've seen?
Yeah, so communications is kind of a basic, the infrastructure thing that most cities are looking to build out right now. As far as technology for connecting vehicles, specifically communications to the vehicles themselves, we wouldn't recommend you guys doing things like that. We don't want Leavenworth to be on the leading edge of technology, because that's, you're going to throw away money at that point. Cities of, we want you to, I don't know, I move my hands because there's a, a.
It's good to talk with my hands too.
Yeah, there's a, there's a chart that shows kind of at what point you should start bringing in technology. You don't want to be the last person to bring in technology because you're going to not use all the benefits of the technology, but, so, so we're not recommending anything that is futuristic or atypical or anything like that.
Even just from a communication standpoint, just wondering what's that going to help us out with right now? I mean, well, yeah, but our communication, but like, how's it going to help us?
Yeah, so it could help you, signal timing is probably the biggest thing, just immediate need, you can, like K seven going south from Eisenhower, all those signals are timed, so as you're coming, as I was coming into the city, I hit greens the entire way until I hit Eisenhower, and it's red or green. So that's, that's one of the big benefits, you can, if you, if you have communications and you have an event or a closure on a street, you can, you can quickly adjust those timings to provide more green before traffic, et cetera like that. If, another benefit of communications, I mentioned, bring video back, so there's some locations where there's video detection, so you can bring that camera feedback to see, you see on your Google Maps, hey, there's a big backup here, why is there a backup? You can quickly go to your video detection camera or a CCTV camera on that intersection, and you can see what's happening. Is it a signal itself, infrastructure issue that we need to get out there and fix something? Or is it just a, is it an accident that the police are responding to that we don't have to worry about? And then, then the, it's also future-proofing you for the future, so like I mentioned, as vehicles become more connected, so it'll, it'll help with that future-proofing of, there's, there's, like city of a light, they, they have some trials, trial testing of manufacturers have asked for data, so as it's leading-edge technology, so it's not something you do, but as a Audi approaches a light, they have a countdown in their dashboard if they're green on a light that says how many seconds there are till it's green. So that's just a, an example of what will come eventually. You can't, you can't get, you can't get that system without the communications.
Rush through it.
Because the way that happens is the signal is talking to the central system software, and then the central system software is talking to the car.
Okay, no, I appreciate, I appreciate that.
You threw, okay, you have, you're just looking at the lights right now, so you're not really, you're not really, there's signals, I mean, you're not really looking at the traffic. Can you determine if there are places where signals aren't needed anymore? And, I mean, like I've thought of school zones and things like that where schools have changed, have you looked at that as well?
We did not look at that. This study did not take.
This is part of that other.
Right, we didn't ask them to look if a signal was warranted or not. We just, what we have and what the condition is and what we need to do.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, we've done that, we've done that quite a few times since I've been here. Fourth and, Fourth and Arch, we removed, Sixth and Delaware, we removed, so, yeah, we can do that with some traffic data, which we can collect. This is, this is the infrastructure of the field.
Okay, got it, got it. That's all I have.
Okay, I don't have anything else.
Keep in mind, this is just information, all the decisions are commissioned, you know, driven, and, you know, just give you all the options and the information to make those decisions, so.
No, thank you for the presentation.
Of course, we can just work as fast as we can afford to work, you know.
How many different things do we have, white poles made of, traffic controlled poles made up out there?
Like material of the poles?
Yeah.
I can tell you.
Are they all the same?
They should be, there's probably a couple different variations, maybe steel and one other.
But they're all made of metal?
Yeah, yeah, they might be coated, painted of some sort, but yeah, they're all metal.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, yeah, thank you so much. Okay, next up, continued discussion of American Rescue Plan Act, AARPA funding.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, we are just before the governing body about sixty days ago, but I wanted to provide some updates on some of the ARPA discussions we've had. We're not going to hit every item we've touched on in the past, but I think we had some relevant updates, so I wanted to share them with the commission. So I'm going to go through the policy report, give you where we are on some of these items. First one, critical infrastructure, specifically wastewater treatment plant. I did note on item one there that the commission approved, one of the three critical items for replacement, and that is in process. And then we are working on the design and replacement process for the trickling filter and filter press projects, which should come before you hopefully pretty soon, but thank you for your help and assistance making those critical infrastructure items to the top of the list, so we should have those back before you pretty soon. Community business, investment, fire expression and ADA update grants, we have gotten quite a bit of feedback from the local businesses, which has been nice, and so the staff proposal has widened its scope just a bit, but does remain focused on the specific items mentioned, and then in the feedback from local businesses. Penny did give me a draft proposal for that grant a couple of days ago, and I need to get through that, get back with her, and then get it in front of the commission, so making good progress on that. But fire expression and ADA are still in there, but we broadened it just a bit from some of the feedback we got from our local businesses, so hope to have that back before you pretty soon. City facility investment, so at the September thirteenth meeting, we completed the upgrade project for the city's HVAC system, the twenty-year-old HVAC system was approved, and then we're now working on documents related to, if you'll remember, the condensate piping replacement project, that was not done in the renovation in the early 2000s, so that piping is decades old and is rusting through, so we'll come back to you with that project. Riverfront Community Center, the request from the commission was a little more information on cost and look for moving the Parks and Recreation office, to actually give them an office that's not in the basement. And so we have done a very limited services contract, not to do any kind of necessarily engineered drawings, but to get cost and layout, so that'll be back before you pretty soon, that's in process now. Staff did collect estimates for both weight and cardio replacement equipment at the Riverfront Community Center, so we'll find the appropriate time to bring that back and show you what that looks like. It's not low cost to completely redo it. We have, we broke it out between the weight room and the cardio, and then we did line items, so, you know, pick and choose if the commission chooses to go that way. We also talked about having some items that we hold for a little while, there's no rush on those, if we get closer to the end and that becomes a priority of the commission, but we have gotten those quotes for that, that equipment.
I like that idea, yeah.
Yeah. Energy sustainability at Riverfront Community Center, Brian and his team have actually been working with a solar panel company to put together, I think the commission asked for sort of a return on investment report on that, what's the upfront cost, when you recoup your cost, what's the ten, fifteen, twenty-year return, how much does it save the city? So it turns out that they need quite a bit of data for that, so we're, Brian and his team are working on that, so we'll get you that report, return on investment report. The one I did want to try to get some commission, maybe consensus tonight, is we talked about a fire truck, the city has seven, four are relatively new, we have three that vary in age, that are, that would be the next three up for replacement, we would bond finance those, we talked about purchasing, I think the fire chief showed that one of them, I believe, was seventeen years old. And so looking at, we did get a quote that's included in your packet, it's within the budgeted amount that we discussed, there's a twenty-eight month delivery time. To give you an idea, when we purchased the last Pierce ones, it was about fourteen months, so that's double ordering, and so you can lock in the price, this would be done for a contract, so a contract would come back to the commission. And I did want to point out, if you'll look, there's a prepay price and a post-delivery price. Would absolutely recommend the delivery, not the prepayment, for a couple of reasons. One, the trade-in value we'll be able to get, will do quite well, I believe, there's a lot of smaller volunteer fire departments around the country that purchase, our equipment's well-maintained. And then also, our finance director did a little bit of a calculus that we can make that difference up in interest based on keeping the money, and we can give you her exact breakout, but it, we actually do, I think, if interest rates stay where they are, we can actually come out to the good about sixteen thousand over what we would save based on holding that amount of money and gaining the interest off that. So if the commission's interested, we would bring back that contract for commission consideration and get our order in, because it's looking like two and a half years, close to that before you, before you get it, so we'll bring that back to the commission. We've been talking a lot about refuse change, so based just on the status of discussion, we just recommend, and I think the commission's on board with this, continue to hold that budget level appropriate for some, the Polycard implementation. Again, this doesn't bind us to anything, but as we start saying, okay, what's spent, what's obligated, what's still available, probably slide that into the obligated, at least a portion of that as a placeholder. Engineered traffic calming, the commission was amenable to looking at sort of a pilot and picking a couple of locations in the city where instead of, you know, we know we have trouble spots and patrol officers could go and spend four hours a day for a whole week, and just so happens those are the wrong four hours, or they go and they get one or two, or we try the radar box or the speed trap, what's more permanent, maybe also something that looks, that's aesthetically appealing. So we've identified maybe two locations that we'd like to try, and so, but we would need the consensus for you to go ahead and get those designed, we've done some internal work, but they would need to be designed by a traffic engineer, so if the, if the commission's amenable to that, we would bring back a design contract for a pilot for two locations. On that, so we can have that turned around pretty quickly and get that back to you, okay? Womans Center, Aquatic Center upgrades, we talked about just a little bit, it's a twenty-year-old facility, it's great, we don't need to do a lot to that, it's popular, but something that's twenty years old doesn't need a little bit of a reason for people to continue to be excited. We kind of honed in on the kiddie pool area, the main pool is really well-designed, whoever, whoever came up with that, the slides and the zero-depth entry, and it's really good. So we were supposed to have an onsite meeting today, and that got canceled, the construction representative had a family emergency, so more to come on that one, but we're still looking into the upgrade, maybe of the kiddie pool area, just to kind of freshen Womans up a little bit after twenty years of service to the community.
You know, when's the last time that they upgraded it?
It hasn't been since it was built. It's the exact same as it was when it was built. Now, we, we actually wax the slides, so it brings the color back up about every five years, we've replaced the umbrellas as they fade in the sun, the chairs, we paint the pool about every five to eight years, the bottom to seal it, but. We've replaced the umbrellas as they fade in the sun, the chairs, we paint the pool about every five to eight years, the bottom to seal it, but there's been no structural changes to that pool since it opened.
That's good, compared to the old pool.
Yeah, I, friends of mine that do go to use Womans, I can remember about four or five, you know, four or five years ago, I guess it was, boy, she and her husband came back and they were like, oh, it's so well-done now.
Yeah.
They really did a job on that.
They must have just polished the slides.
That's right.
Made the colors brighter, you know.
There weren't some slides or other kind of playground sort of equipment put in there recently?
We've done a little bit in the kiddie pool, we put new water features in there six, seven years ago, you know, because the valves rust out, but we haven't made any structural changes.
From a consensus standpoint, I'm good with all those moving forward, we all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And not included in this update, but still active, the Wilson Avenue repair, I sent the commission some information about some discussions we've had with some business expansion back there, so we have some good numbers, but that probably needs to be a separate discussion, so we'll bring that back. Unfortunately, the Boys and Girls Club, I think, is still on hold, as they transitioned their CEO, who left unexpectedly, so we're still on hold on that. A housing project, I met yesterday, after obviously writing this policy report with Sister Vicky, and she has some concrete plans now with some specific asks. I encouraged her to get some more specific numbers with some line items and some more detail about what that would look like to present to the commission, that would be merely her presenting to you.
Yeah.
So I think sooner rather than later, that group, the Leavenworth Housing Coalition, yeah, will be back before the commission with some ideas and some requests, so. And then other recreational amenities, I think we've done really well through our CIP, funding our parks and recreation and our trails and communities. So I don't have anything specific here, but just something for the commission to continue to think about it, as you're out and about in the community, if you hear of any specific projects that may not be in the five-year CIP that you think would be of benefit to our residents. So a lot of work, I think, hopefully happening, the commission's already approved some, move on the fire truck, the engineered traffic calming and some other stuff, and get some of those reports back to you pretty soon, the return on investment documents you've asked for, and some more detailed cost information. So that'll be coming here in the next couple of meetings.
How exciting. I have a question, not about really any of this, but the splash pad, how is that going? I mean, I drive by and there's people there all the time, but when's it going to shut down?
It's all weather-dependent, we are going to go through the end of September regardless. Now, if October starts off like the end of this week looks like it is, but if it's back in the eighties, we got our first water bill and it's not that bad, we were expecting, you know.
That's what I was saying.
And so, so I think we'll keep it, it doesn't, doesn't take much maintenance, so as long as the weather's decent, I think some daycares are using it during the day, which has been kind of something we didn't really anticipate. You see some buses or vans pull up.
I see cars up there when I drive by.
And so that's kind of a neat thing.
Don't have to worry about any of my drivers.
So.
That's right, yeah.
And then we'll have, still have a grand opening when all the features get in in the spring, but at least through September, and then we'll see how the weather is.
Okay.
Other questions, comments, I got the feedback I need, but if there's any other questions.
About this, I think it's good, focus on those things and then those other.
And push off, okay. Sounds good, yeah.
Every time we talk about it, if we have some idea of the kind of money we're looking at, you know, we don't want to overspend, you know, we don't want to plan to spend more than what we're getting.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, next time I'll arrange it in a, you know, sort of spin obligated and open, looking at doing it that way.
That would be helpful.
Sure, can do.
Okay, okay, well, let's wrap it up, did, you have anything?
No, nothing, nothing.
Penny, did you want to have anything to say on Camp Leavenworth?
I was going to defer to the commission, I mean.
Two words, Camp Leavenworth this weekend.
We're happy to say it starts at five o'clock on Friday, runs five to ten. We have about a hundred and seventy-five.
Well, I didn't get the memo.
Well, you picked your shirt up.
But, okay, so, yeah, so that end, Friday's at five.
Five to ten on Friday, and then we start with our five K run and walk Saturday morning, and then the festival itself's open from eleven to eleven. Fireworks are Friday night, we're doing them a little bit earlier this year, around eight o'clock, and of course, we have silent disco, food vendors, great local participation, great bands, smores, looks like the weather's going to cooperate. And so we're really excited about it, I think we're at a hundred and seventy-five or so on the five K, which for a first-year five K is really good.
And you can still register that day, the day of the run, so.
And she's got everybody she needs to introduce the bands or whatever, so we're good there?
Yeah, and if we need somebody while we're there, we may pull you up on stage and have you. So.
That's okay.
Be down there, starting Thursday morning, we'll be down there, starting to set up.
When, I have a question from a business down there behind Haymarket, when do they close, because they have payroll on Friday, but they're going to do it on Thursday. When do they close that off so that people can't come into that parking lot behind Haymarket?
Behind.
Haymarket?
Not, behind the Heritage Center, sorry.
So, let me know the business, because we, any businesses that are affected, okay, we're reaching out to them one-on-one, so we'll reach out to them one-on-one.
I'll let her know.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, the website, if I'm not mistaken, is campleavenworth.org, dot com.
Dot com.
Dot com.
CampLeavenworth.com.
And at that point, at that place, you can find out all the information about Camp Leavenworth, campleavenworth.com, find out all kinds of information, and you can register to volunteer.
That's right.
Yes.
Because they can always use volunteers at Camp Leavenworth down there.
Are you volunteering, Ed?
Yes. He was doing the commercial.
Yeah, no, I was hearing his name.
He's volunteering right now. Did you, yeah, did you sign up? Okay. Public information. You haven't got on there yet?
I carried it with me all weekend down there, and I never got a chance to pull out my tablet.
I'm signed up, I, well, I volunteer every year, and I think, Griff, I think you said you signed up?
Oh, yeah.
The kid in Griffis volunteered his whole family be out there on that five K.
Well, I'm looking forward to it.
I know, I think that's going to be great.
My wife will lay me in the ground, so.
Well, yeah, that'll be great. Okay, did anyone else have anything?
Well, come and meet people at Camp Leavenworth.
Yes. Discover.
I'm going to keep sliding it in there every year, everyone catches on. Come and meet people.
Come and meet people.
I have one more question, and this might be a downer, because it's not about Camp Leavenworth, the refuse, we're going to be discussing four different times. I mean, okay, this started out as, I mean, when I really was pushing this, it was to cut back on the amount of stuff that's out there to be picked up, right? Do we have to wait until we're all through with all of that before anything can be implemented, or is there something that could be done?
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Right, before we start landing on the carts and the other stuff, can we just cut back on it, can we just set changing orders to cut back on the number of?
The one, the one of the four, the one of the four elements that would most directly get at that is exploring the issuance of citations, probably. That would be, because there's nothing else in there that specifically would get at the enforcement to be able to end it, other than changing essentially the stick, which is, which would be citations.
So you really have to wait till it's all done before we can do?
Well, hopefully it won't take that long, we want to get this done pretty quickly, but if you would like to switch the order, we could do that, but I think it should be all done this year.
It's going to be, okay, like every, every week.
I know.
Every week, it's so aggravating to me to see this.
In different areas, the huge amounts of, yeah.
Well, it's my understanding when I went by one house and they had a bunch of construction stuff out there, I happened to tell them that the city won't pick that up, because it was a construction waste, and I heard that they buried it in the backyard.
God, believe it. That's a, that's a common construction thing to do.
You heard that, too.
I heard that, too. I know what you're talking about.
Throw it in and cover it up.
Yeah.
Anyway, anyway, I just, I just was curious about that, do we have to wait until this whole process is over before anything is done?
So I guess you're saying now.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Don't forget to come out to Camp Leavenworth.
Camp Leavenworth. Have fun at Camp Leavenworth. The weather's going to be gorgeous.
It is going to be great, it's going to be great, so.
I have a sweatshirt, too, I'll wear my sweatshirt.
Come and learn things at Camp Leavenworth, you know, you'll find a bunch of us there, you can come and ask questions.
Maybe Ed will do the silent disco.
They want to do that.
Ain't going to happen.
They want to do the silent disco, they don't want to talk to us.
Okay, have a great evening, and we'll see you at Camp Leavenworth.